The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, good evening. Welcome back to our town council in-person meetings. This is our first of such. I will take my mask off while I'm speaking just so clarity of understanding and those who wish to make comment, certainly that's perfectly permissible. We're spread apart and all the precautions have been taken. If you'd rather keep yours on, that's fine. So at any rate, good evening. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council meeting. Today is Monday, September 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. If you will all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Tompkins will lead us.
Pledge of allegiance.
Who do I have?
The United States of America, through the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, we do not have any presentations or public hearings, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was a mistake in the minutes of the new business. Number two new business has Councilman Wazorko making a motion and also making a second to the motion.
Okay, can you turn your mic, please, for the sake of our recorders?
I'm sorry. I thought I had turned it on.
Oh, I know. Well, we're back and we've got to get back to the habits.
All right. So the minutes of August 17th need a correction. Number two under new business has Councilman Wazorko making a motion and also making a second to the motion. So whoever made the second needs to be added in there.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2020 regular meeting with corrections.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Are there any other additional comments or corrections to those minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Number four, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements and reports to make this evening? I just have a brief report. Just this evening, I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony at Stronghold. It's a new business on 13 Whiting Street. Brian Johnson, many of us know Brian. He is a reporter for the Herald/Bristol Press. He has opened a new business, which is his passion. It's video games, movies, and a lot of nostalgia surrounding those types of video games. He invites people to come in. You can sit down and play some games. You can talk to Brian. And there's, you know, there's a growing interest in that kind of engagement with older video games and some older movies as well. So he did a very nice opening. He cut the ribbon with the Chamber of Commerce, and I certainly wish him every success in his new venture. He will continue on as a reporter from the Herald/Bristol Press, and then this will be his side business. So he's a busy young man that's taking a new step to being an owner of his own business. So that is my report. Do we have any other reports that folks attended events or things of that nature? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, appointments and resignations. We have a couple of resignations this evening. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ashley O'Connell from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Michael Bruno from the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or resignations this evening we should take care of? Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Board of Education, I don't believe we have a report this evening, although I can give a brief summary. I attended the Board of Education meeting in person last Monday. The school opening went very smoothly. Superintendent LaPage had a lengthy report regarding the number of students that are opting to be learning at home. I think there was about 456 students of the district that are going to be at home full-time. He said the opening went relatively smoothly. Things are moving along as they had hoped it would be. And on Friday, he made another announcement stating that at the beginning of October, the schools are going to be going back full in. Children and families that still wish to do distance learning, of course, can still continue to do that. But the decision was made to have students return to school full-time, five days a week, and hopefully that will work out. And of course, monitoring will be always on everybody's mind, so they're going to be keeping track of what's happening. So that was this last Friday, he made that announcement. So there's a lot going on over there. They're very busy. They have a lot of team members that are fully engaged in helping the children and the families get through the process. So I think Plainville is doing a good job in getting things up and running. Okay, so that was my report from the Board of Education. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have a report for us tonight?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I do not have a report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you for being here with us in person. It's nice to see everybody live and in person. We've been looking at screens over the past many months, so good to be back. All right. The next item on our agenda is the report of the Town Manager. So Mr. Lee, I'll let you take that over.
Thank you very much. I have several items. The first one is the Whiting Street Road Reconstruction Project. Several months ago, town staff submitted a request to CROG under the Lotzip program for the reconstruction of a portion of Whiting Street. This was a competitive grant program funded by the state and administered by CROG. Our request totaled $2,324,400. Last week, the CROG Policy Board, of which I attend the meetings as a representative from Plainville, approved that this project be included in our Lotzip program for 2021. Plainville was one of 23 projects that were approved by the CROG Policy Board. You have a listing of those projects. The grant will pay for 100% of the needed improvements from Broad Street to Fairview Avenue, a distance of approximately 1,900 feet. The town will use road bond monies to complete the rest of Whiting from Fairview Avenue to East Street. The project includes an upgrade of the drainage system and the removal of the old trolley tracks currently buried in a portion of the road. I want to thank John Bossy, Director of Technical Services, and Mike Perry, who is the Town Surveyor, for putting together the necessary information for the grant application that was submitted to CROG. The quality of their work was instrumental in CROG's recommendation to fund the project, thus saving the town over $2.3 million in road improvements needed for Whiting Street. It is anticipated that the reconstruction of Whiting Street should happen next summer. Second item I have is the request from the Farmington Canal Condominiums for Urban Act Grant. In June of last year, the state DOT removed trees along Route 72 in Plainville. The recent storm in August blew down several other trees as well adjacent to the highway. This resulted in eliminating a good portion of the buffer between the highway and the Farmington Canal condominiums located off of Farmington Avenue. As a result, noise from the highway has greatly increased, according to the Farmington Canal condo association president. The association contacted Representative Bill Pettit to see if the DOT would install a sound barrier in this area because of the elimination of the tree buffer. Representative Pettit indicated that DOT did not have funds for this purpose. He suggested that bond funds could be applied through the Urban Act program. It is a relatively simple process to apply for funding under the Urban Act program. The difficulty is getting the funds approved. The president of the condo association has requested that the town apply for these funds, and if there is no objections, town staff will submit a grant application under the Urban Act program. If approved, the grant would pay 100% of the cost of any sound barrier installation. And I don't know, Representative Pettit, if you wanted to say a few words regarding that discussion at all, or...I know you were more intimately involved with them early on, so.
Thank you, Robert. Just that, I think the condo association, seeing the documents, did a good job at documenting what had occurred. I think Mr. Lee's been over there and taken some pictures. If you walk over there, it's the section just past CVS where 72 cuts across, and the condos on the left side heading north on Route 10. And you walk back there, it's quite noisy when the traffic is heavy, and as you all know, early in the morning, it often is. So I think it's a very reasonable request. And as I said to Mr. Lee earlier tonight, DOT didn't have the funds in the budget, but offered this up as an alternative where potentially we could get funding, and it wouldn't cost the town any money. So I think it's reasonable to make the application to try to improve the quality of life for the people that live in the condos.
Thank you, Representative Pettit. We appreciate your input and assistance with that, certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
All right. We'll move forward with that. It may take us several weeks to get, you know, cost estimates and whatever together and put it together, a package, but, you know, we'll get it done and send it, and we'll give you a copy of it so you know what was submitted. I think I know I included in your packages this evening pictures, you know, that were taken, so you get a flavor for what was, you know, done with regards to the buffer. The next item I have is the sewer user fee discussion. Sewer user charges are billed November 1st each year. The Finance Department has updated the long-term projection for sewer operating fund through the year 2026. That was included in your packages as well. The goal with regards to sewer operating fund is to maintain a fund balance equal to three months' worth of sewer operating budget. Based on this analysis, town staff is recommending a 2% increase in the sewer user charges for this year. It is noted that a previous budget projection completed about five years ago projected that an increase of 4.5% would be needed in 2021. So we've, you know, due to, you know, some items coming in on their budget and having additional information, we feel comfortable recommending a 2% increase for this year. Currently, the minimum charge is $407.76. A 2% recommendation would result in a minimum charge increasing by $8.16. A public hearing must be held before the town council can decide on any proposed change to the sewer user charge. There is an item on a new business that would set the public hearing for the next town council meeting on October 5th. I think the only thing I'd like to add to this is if you go to the projection that was part of your package, you will see that when you get out to fiscal year 2026, the gain or loss for that year is about, well, we're projecting $564,000. And that would bring us pretty close to the three months' worth of operating budget. As you see, we're estimating that the three months of expenses will be $1,192,000. And, you know, if we continue with a 2% increase over that period of time, we will bring the fund balance down to approximately $1.3 million, $1,1295,000. So that would mean in 2027, you know, there may be, you know, a larger, you know, amount to have to raise as a result of the, you know, being pretty close to the three-month period. So, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying, going forward, we've got to keep an eye on this and maybe run some scenarios where we may have to ramp up a little, you know, instead of having 2% through 2026, we may have to go to, we may do some analysis on what is 3% over the next, you know, those years to get us to 2026, what that looks like. Because, you know, we would like, and certainly would be up to the council, to as much as possible to avoid the, you know, the large jump that would be required to make up that in 2027. But I think that once we get a good year of operations under the newly renovated system of phosphorus removal, we'll be better able to estimate, you know, where we're going as far as expenses are concerned. All right. There's no questions. I'll move on to item number four, which is the White Oak Request for Qualifications Update. Proposals from developers interested in the White Oak property are due this Thursday, September 24th, at 2:00 PM in the Town Manager's office. To date, between five to eight developers have expressed interest in the property. Once the proposals have been received, town staff will provide them to the town council members for your review, and we will make some suggestions on how to vet those proposals and see if the council wants to do it as a subcommittee or whether you want to do it as a whole group. We'd recommend that, you know, we call developers that you would like to hear from and have some question and answer and, you know, have a more discussion about what their proposals indicate and perhaps some timelines and those types of things.
Just a quick comment on that, Robert. I feel that if you only get a few proposals that come in, let's say less than five, that to me would be a few. I would suggest the council look at all of them, but if you find that you're getting a number of them beyond that, then perhaps you'd want a smaller group, call through that, and then come back and report. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
Madam Chair, I think if it's four or less, the council hand, you know, I think that's enough for the council to handle. If I think if it's five or more, maybe a subcommittee at that point can narrow it down to maybe three or so for the entire council.
Is everybody okay with that approach to looking at these things? Yeah? Anybody else? Yeah? Okay.
We'll give you a summary either, you know, Thursday, probably before the end of the day Thursday, because we're open until 8:00. So try to get at least a summary of what we received and go from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is COVID-19 update. The state Health Department recently issued guidelines regarding the reopening of senior centers in Connecticut. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the senior center suspended in-person services. I believe that was back in March. The senior center is expected to resume limited in-person services on Monday, November 2nd. The November 2nd opening is dependent on several factors, including adjustments to advanced registration, social distancing, maximum attendance restrictions, and scheduling. In addition, several physical upgrades to the senior center need to be made before it can be opened to the public. These improvements include alterations and modifications to the reception desk and working space areas, as well as the relocation of common area furniture. Items have been ordered, and it will take several weeks before they arrive and can be installed. There is a growing concern about a second wave of COVID-19-related cases, and this may further impact the senior center as the winter approaches. Updates will be posted on the town website. It should be remembered that seniors are the most at-risk population, and senior centers must exercise caution throughout the reopening and ensuring strict adherence to the protocols. The November 2nd proposed reopening offers time to address still developing and pending concerns and offer a safe and healthy programming. With few exceptions, Plainville is following reopening procedures and timelines similar to other Connecticut senior centers, with the exception of perhaps New Britain, who is a little bit ahead of the curve. I know that Matt, during happenings, will talk about some of the programs that the senior center is, you know, continues to offer on a limited basis as we speak.
Robert, just a comment regarding that. I have had some members of the senior center contact me directly. Over the past probably three to four weeks, you know, the end of the summer showed up, and the big question is, when can we get back to start participating, going to the center and doing things? And I understand their plight. You know, this is, for some, has been an isolation period of some six months, where perhaps this was their only social interaction for some folks. And they do understand the, you know, the concerns and the health issues, and that's, of course, a priority for everybody. So I was wondering, are we just getting going on doing some of these physical improvements there? Have we been working on them over the summer? You said that things have to be ordered. That hasn't happened yet, or it's in the process of being ordered? Some of these, you know, whatever physical changes they have to make there?
It has been ordered. My understanding that it has been ordered. Part of it was waiting for the state to give us some guidance with respect to the protocols, and they didn't issue them till late August. So, you know, we didn't want to presume that we knew exactly what their requirements would be, you know, and then start spending money to improve something and then have the state say, well, you need to do X, Y, and Z instead of A, B, and C. So that did delay us coming out of the gate. We also know that, you know, some of these improvements are similar to the improvements that we made in our other buildings, like the municipal center, at the schools. And there was a little bit of a run on those types of materials, especially the plexiglass, you know, enclosures that was, you know, separating people. And it was even difficult for us to get some of that plexiglass for our library. We could certainly put up some temporary, some temporary ones that would be replaced at a later time, but we just felt that, you know, we'd rather do it right than kind of do it, you know, kind of on a shoestring and then replace it later. But yes, that is, those are good portion of the reasons why we've been, you know, we weren't ready to open, you know, right when the state said, well, you could open on September 1st, for example, and they give us the protocols, you know, last week of August.
Okay. I understand that. I'm just relaying the fact that there are some that have called and said that, you know, why can't we get back to our programming? The schools have opened, and now they're going into full opening, at least in Plainville. I don't know what any of the other schools in the surrounding area are contemplating, but, you know, and our library opened. So I think the seniors are anxious to get back, at least in some fashion. Certainly, I believe they understand it won't be as it was prior to the close in March. But there's, you know, there's certain anxiousness about being able to get back and see some people in person and do some of those activities, pool playing and some of the physical activities that used to go on there, and some of the services that the center provided. So I'm just relaying some of the thoughts that were presented to me by individuals and in a hope that they could get there sooner than later. But if this is the timeframe, then I guess they will work on it as quickly as they can to resume some of those things for them.
Yeah, and we're seeing, you know, for example, you know, schools have partially reopened, you know, and the plan is for them to fully reopen in early October.
Right.
But we read in the paper today that, you know, Suddington High School closed down because of one, you know, positive case, and they're going to be closed tomorrow as well.
Yeah.
And part of that has to do with the, with contact tracing. You know, if they meet with the person and it's somebody who, as I understand it, you know, in the Suddington matter, they had a contact trace, you know, upwards of 300 persons, and they just wasn't able to, you know, do that over the weekend.
That's pretty much a lot of people.
And it changes depending upon the individuals, you know, who they would have interacted with. So, you know, we're seeing where things are opening and things are closing fairly quickly. And, you know, by the time November rolls around, we may be talking about a whole new ballgame at that point as well, so.
Of course. I know that the decisions for the schools to close or not is a local decision, correct? The governor has left that as a local decision, whether a school closes because of some cases being reported. It's not a state mandate that they close.
Right, but there are parameters with respect to, there are guidelines with regard to that. And, you know, so you have to at least implement the guidelines if you're going to have in-person attendance.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, again, you know, this is ever on the forefront of our minds, and I hope everybody stays well, and there is no major resurgence, but we will find out. And it's my greatest hope that the seniors can get back to, in some fashion, back to their center. That means a lot to so many that perhaps that's their only social contact for their entire week or month. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item I have is the financial dashboard. I think Matt is going to at least put it up on the screen as well. And these are the financial dashboard for the first two months of the fiscal year. With regards to expenditures, we spent a little bit over $16 million, $16.5 million. That's, you know, a little bit above our two-year average, but, you know, by 1%. So it's really negligible. On the general government side, we're a little bit ahead of the two-year pace. We're on the Board of Education side a little bit behind the two-year pace. With regards to police overtime, we still continue to, you know, have relatively, you know, high numbers, but for the first two months of this fiscal year, we're, we are at 17% of the budget, which is significantly below the two-year average for the first two months, you know, so far as well. So hopefully that trend will continue. We're $37,000 lower than the two-year average. Roadways overtime is above. I believe that a good portion of those costs are related to the, you know, the amount that we spent on the storm, you know, removing debris and clearing the roads. What that did was back up some of our other work, which required us, for example, to do crack sealing, although it isn't reflected in this, in this one, in this particular report, where we did crack sealing over the weekend because we needed to catch up before we got, you know, pushed back into leaf season. And there's other type duties that we had to catch up on that required, you know, some overtime as a result of the storm. We will get reimbursement for a good portion of our costs that was incurred by the Public Works Department as a result of the storm, and we just haven't received the... Buildings and grounds overtime, less so. Part of that is because we didn't have as much overtime work on weekends in the parks because we weren't, you know, we weren't running programs and whatnot, so as much program. So some of that, you know, so we're a little bit ahead of the game as far as billions of grounds overtime is concerned. Obviously, the, no snow overtime as yet, although it is getting cooler. With regards to municipal solid waste, we're running about 89 tons over the previous two-year average. That represents about $6,000 if it, you know, represent, that those 89 tons represent about $6,000 right now, higher than what was the two-year, you know, the two-year average. With regards to recycling, we also are running a little bit behind previous years, at least the previous year, because we only began following those numbers based upon the fact that we're now paying for recycling. So we're about 15 tons behind the one-year average. Our current tip fee is, although it changes each month, is lower right now by about $6 a ton than what we had budgeted. And you can see that on the report as well. Is there any questions on the expenditure side, at least these numbers? If not, I'll go to the With regards to all revenues, we've collected about 38, almost 39%. That's about 4% below what we, you know, previous years, two-year average. Most of that difference is in the area of current taxes. We received 40, pretty much 49% of current taxes. Our two-year average has been 56. I believe that's directly impacted with regards to, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic. And there are people who, you know, at least for the time being, you know, are either unemployed or it's more difficult to, you know, pay taxes right now. That amounts to somewhere in the area of $600,000. With regards to our fund balance, this was the same as last month. We're at 15.55% or $9.7 million. Any questions on the revenue, these revenues?
No.
With regards to special funds, not surprisingly, the recreation fund expenditures are down compared to previous years due to the fact that we didn't have as much of our summer programming, both at the pool. We had limited at the pool and limited for the summer day camp. And same thing on the revenue side as well. With regards to Robertson Airport expenditures, we're running pretty, you know, pretty much where we expect to be. Our fund balance in the Robertson Airport right now stands at $555,000, although the Aviation Commission has plans to spend down some of the airport fund balance to make improvements at the airport, and that, you know, both to the parents, they're, and Matt will report on that, on some of that during his happenings as well. The Water Push Control Authority facility expenditures, we're running behind the two-year average. And that's basically because the superintendent generally has encumbered certain dollars that he knows he's going to spend, you know, during the whole year. He hasn't done those encumbrances yet, so there's really not much surprise there, except he hasn't done his, you know, his expected encumbrances. And the revenues, we won't see an increase in the revenues. And the revenues, we won't see an increase in the revenues, you know, to a great degree until they're billed out, you know, through the month of November. With regards to the library, you know, running pretty much in line, both on the expenditure side and on the revenue side, is basically we turn over to the library from the, you know, from the town. Any questions on any of the special funds?
No.
If not, we have the major projects report. Road Bond 1 and Road Bond 2, we haven't had much activity because we did a good, great majority of the road bond work both, you know, in May and June. We still have, you know, good balances in both of those, well, at least in Road Bond 2, and some left in Road Bond 1. As far as the phosphorus removal project, right now, the project is almost completed. And right now, we're running under budget by about $368,000, $369,000, which, you know, we expect that, when all is said and done, that that project will come in under budget. With regards to the Wheel of School project, you'll see a negative number in terms of spent in August. You say, how is that possible? I asked the same question, of course. I kind of knew the answer, but I wanted to get it confirmed. That is, there was some encumbrances as far as that project was concerned, things that they expected to expand based on contracts that were signed. And when they actually did the work, they didn't come in as high as, you know, some of the encumbrances were able to, some of the expenditures came in under what we had encumbered, so they released some of those encumbrances. So that's why there's a negative number as far as that's concerned. We still anticipate that that budget will, or that project will come in under budget as well. The other three items are, you know, minimal changes as far as major projects and stuff. Those other three are the Plainville High School parking lot project, there was a small expenditure done there with some drainage issues, Northwest Drive rehabilitation, which is pretty much closed out, and the Plainville High School turf maintenance fund, which currently has a balance of a little bit over $100,000. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Dasko for happenings, and then him and I would be available to answer any questions or comments you may have for us.
Good evening, Three Utown Manager Lee and Chair Person Pogliisi. We have a number of happenings to report this month. Elections are November 3, 2020. Don't forget to vote. Election and polling locations will be open 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, the Secretary of State is making it easier to vote. Absentee ballot applications have been mailed to all registered Plainville voters. They can be returned either to the ballot drop box here in the municipal center on the side entrance, or by mail in the postage-paid envelope that was provided. Actual absentee ballots will be mailed beginning October 2. To avoid postal delays, we're encouraging folks to use the official absentee, the official ballot box that I just mentioned on the side entrance when returning those completed ballots. Bulk waste collection began September 14 and continues through Monday, October 26. Eligible residents can schedule their once-annual bulk collection by calling the Town Haller, CWPM. Residents are reminded that no bulk waste is to be placed at the curb more than 24 hours prior to your scheduled collection. Information is available on the town website. Robertson Airport, this was mentioned a few moments ago. It's an exciting time at the airport. Two projects are currently ongoing, repaving of the parallel taxiway and painting of airport buildings. September 8, full-time construction began on the parallel taxiway project, and September 15, painting began on hangars 3, 4, and 6. This was approved at the last council meeting. Both projects have no general fund impacts. Repaving of the parallel taxiway is expected to be covered 100% by Federal Aviation Administration dollars, and the painting will be funded from the aforementioned airport fund. The senior center, while not physically open, is continuing to offer programming. Please feel free to reach out to the senior center at 747-5728 for more information. A few highlights of programs that they have coming for the next month is COVID-19 drive-through testing will be free and available 9:00 AM to noon on September 25. There's a number of virtual programs, such as ones involving Zoom, fitness challenges, cardio chair fitness, and a Healthy Brain series coming up in Tuesdays in October. Again, more information is available from the senior center. And as also mentioned, sewer use billing, bills for the 2021 year will be mailed in late October 2020. Keep your eye on your mailboxes. Delinquent notices, delinquent sewer user tax billing notices have been sent out earlier this month. To avoid a lien against your property and an additional $24 lien fee, payments must be received by September 30 of 2020. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Robert and Matt, for your reports. They're informative. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Matt with the information they provided? Yes.
Just one quick question with regards to Whiting Street. Was that, I know it wasn't included in year one, phase two bonding, as far as getting it done. Was that on the list to get done at some point by the town?
Yes, it was in Road Bond 2.
Just, we don't know what year yet necessarily.
Next year.
Was it next year?
Well, we're going to do it next year. We pushed it back because we felt we had a good chance of getting funding for that and rather than spend local funds, we figured, let's take a shot at getting the, you know, the state and federal funds.
So with that money, essentially, we've been able to free, not free up, that's probably not the right way to say it, but essentially, we have $2 million plus now we can spend on other roads that need to be addressed.
Yes. And we, you know, we probably wouldn't have done as much of the drainage work as we might have otherwise if it wasn't for this grant. And I think that was an opportunity to take care of some of those as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to, you know, really commend the staff for the work that was done on that grant. It's really a significant amount of money that is saving us. And, you know, certainly anybody who's done grant applications know the tremendous amount of time and effort that they take. So just wanted to say, state my appreciation, and I'm sure everybody's appreciation for that.
Thank you.
We also have a pretty good track record with lots of funds as far as getting the projects done. Part of that is because we have some in-house staff. We actually design it ahead of time so that when we do get the funding, we can move forward and complete the project quicker than other communities, where if they get the dollars, now they go out and do some of the engineering, which delays it further. So the quicker you can spend the money, at times, is generally looked at very favorably by Kragwin staff when they're reviewing it.
Right.
We have a good track record as far as that.
If you implement what you ask for.
Yes.
Great, surely.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for the town manager or Matt? Okay, thank you for that, both of you. Moving on to public comment section. This is our first public comment section since March, so the rules are still the same. I would ask that if anybody wishes to speak to the council, you'll have one opportunity. You will have three minutes. If you come to the microphone setup in the aisleway, please state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. Does anybody have anything that they wish to address to the council? Representative Pettit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. William Pettit, 132 Redstone Hill. Three minutes may be tough. First thing, just general information, since we're typically not in this situation, for anybody who's watching, for the State House and Senate to go into special session, we need to be called in by the President of the Senate, or the Speaker of the House, or the Governor, or need to have 51% of the members of the House and Senate petition the Secretary of State to do so. The Senate's supposed to be in this week. They're still arguing about a variety of bills and may not go until next week, and the House may go in after that. One of the bills that's being discussed, you heard something about early voting, and one of the proposals that's out there is a bill that would allow early counting of absentee ballots. But just in this past week, both the Town Clerks Association and the Register of Voters Association across the state oppose this bill because there's been no public hearing. They're concerned about the accuracy. They're concerned about leaked results early impacting the election. They're concerned about staffing, et cetera. So whether or not that bill comes forward remains to be seen. Another bill of concern that may come forward, but I'm hearing it doesn't have a lot of legs right now, is some amendments to the police accountability bill, because some towns are seeing repercussions in terms of retirements, in terms of people losing umbrella insurance, not qualifying for mortgage insurance and the like. But that may be pushed off into the full session next year. Thirdly, the most recent event, the storm and the Eversource hearing. I would ask the people watching, and if this Eversource bill comes forward, that be careful of gifts with shiny paper. And by that, I mean, it's a complicated bill with 16 or 20 sections. The shiny paper is maybe getting $125, $250, $500 for spoiled food and medications. The problem is, there's a lot of requirements in there saying, Eversource must restore power within 96 hours, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Many of the things that are asked for in the bill all cost a lot of money, and they're all things that can then be billed back to the consumer. So my concern is, although it may look like a good thing for the short haul, it may, if you get 500 bucks upfront here, but it costs you another 40 bucks a month in your electric bill, which is $480 a year, over five years, you're behind the eight ball. So the other issues in that bill are attempting to pull PURA, the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, away from deep a little bit, and putting the Office of the Consumer Council up to full strength. We don't have a full head for the Office of the Consumer Council, and that's really the person that should be representing our interests before the government, per se. PURA's really like to judge and looks at the arguments from both sides in terms of rates. So it's a complicated bill. We've been able to get some adjustments to it, but the final form that it comes out in remains to be seen. The final thing I'll end with is, I don't know where we're going to go with, I think today was the first day where the Office of Early Childhood, OEC, was requiring kids two and three at daycares to have masks on. I asked personally the Department of Public Health and OEC what the data was, because as far as I know, there is no data on young kids like that. Young kids won't keep masks on, and it becomes more of an issue than anything else. I've had no response to date. I don't know what's happened on day one, but my mailbox was flooded with daycare owners and mom saying, you know, my one or two or three-year-old can't have a mask on for 10 hours at daycare. This is not going to work. And actually, there's really no data to back up that it's any utility. So my mail has been quiet today, so maybe it was a quiet start, or maybe people just did civil disobedience, because there's a couple ways for people to avoid it, though the daycare centers are sort of on the hook in terms of making other arrangements. So I'm not sure where that's going to head. That was sort of interesting. I talked to a variety of pediatricians who all agreed that masking very young children, one, two, and three, was not helpful, public health policy in general. So a lot of other things going on, but I thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'll just give you a moment. Do any of the council members have any questions or comments regarding Representative Pettit's presentation? A lot of information there, a lot of going on over the past few months, so updates are always helpful. Very good? Okay, thank you again for coming in to see us. Appreciate it. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Last chance. Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Joanne? Thank you, Carol.
Building wear his mask, I'm not going to wear mine. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I'm here tonight to pick up an old issue, the trail going through Plainville, the proposed trail, alignment C. I am still strongly against it. I don't want it in Plainville. You already have Route 10 marked. There's no need for it to go squiggly wiggly through the woods and be intrusive and invasive to backyards, front yards, having people, for instance, on Broad Street, losing their parking in front of their houses, going into the park. God only knows what kind of people will be in there when there are small children running around. Will maybe get the druggies and the perverts. So I am against alignment C. And it's about time people in this town woke up. It's the state of Connecticut should wake up. And God bless America and wake up, America. Lot of trouble out there. And I just can't believe that those that are crawling out of their bunkers are causing all the trouble, burning flags, our wonderful, beautiful flag, and burning and looting. If it ever comes to Plainville, I hope that, I'm sure the police will be ready. Anyhow, wake up, Plainville, wake up, Connecticut, and wake up, America.
Thank you.
I'm sure I've used up more than three minutes.
Okay, doesn't appear that there's anyone else in the audience that would be speaking. So having said that, I will close public comments and move on to the agenda items. We have no old business, and we do have a few things on our new business. So may I have a motion to approve item number one, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion for the Town Council acting as Water Pollution Control Authority to establish a public hearing for Monday, October 5, 2021, at 7:00 at the Municipal Center to hear public comment on the sewer user rate for the period November 1, 2020 to October 31, 2021.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Lee?
I just want to confirm that in our public hearing notice, is it acceptable if we put the 2% rate as a proposed public hearing notice?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
All right, just wanted to confirm.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions regarding the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Do we have any other discussions of interest this evening, Mr. Lee?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything that they'd like to bring up this time? Okay, all right. We have an executive session this evening, so I would like to have a motion to go into executive session. We will probably not be taking any action thereafter, so I need a motion to go in, and please read the items we'll be discussing.
Madam Chair? Motion to go into executive session for the purposes of land acquisition matter and to the town manager evaluation discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be going into an executive session now. We'll take a moment or two before we do that.